Get signed in. Lori's already signed in. And let me get back to the PowerPoint for you.
All right, so Ron was saying that I pretty much had everything already set up correctly. And gave me a couple of tips and then we might have a.
Okay, good.
A nice. Oh, wonderful. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. I have a comment card as well.
No way. You know, do FaceTime or something.
Do I give these to you?
But yeah.
I can normally you can collect them before the meeting. Put them in front of Stephen.
I can do that. Okay, thank you.
No, check out the river. That's beautiful. I have a seat with him actually. So. Uh, maybe we'll ask for this a two hour drive.
Oops. I guess I need to.
Testing.
See that works?
Yeah, excuse me.
Test, test. Test, test.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me.
Test, test. Test, test.
Yeah.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is July 31st. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Spokane County Planning Commission. It's 9:00 AM. Actually, it's 9:03. Today, our first order of business, we will, the public, we've got a workshop today. The, the public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link and telephone conference links. Star nine to raise hand and star six to speak. Individuals are limited to one three minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported, and as we typically do, we introduce our commission to our public. Starting to my right. Introductions.
Melissa Whitstruck.
Lonnie Edwards.
Clyde Hossi.
Pete Rayner.
Stephen Poole.
Thank you all for coming. We have a quorum. The first order of business is what we refer to as the time when the public may comment and address the commission for items that are not N O T on this particular agenda today. So is there anyone here that would like to address the commission either online or in the audience that wants to talk to us about something that is not on this current agenda that's been published? I'll give them some time. Do anybody online? Can you tell? There's no. Well, there may be later, but just keep me.
Okay, all right.
All right, seeing none, let's move on to our workshop. Scott Chesney, would you do the honors, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you as always. We are before you today with another chapter in wind renewable energies, specifically wind and wind towers, turbines. You have seen much information over the last year that has come before you. Most of what has been in the past has been related to technical issues related to turbine height, potential setback distances, performance, noise, flicker, and issues like that to create a guide of best available science that will ultimately guide us in preventing, in bringing something to you for a future ordinance of some kind that will go into our development regulations. In your packets and posted online is a white paper that has much more detail than we will get into the presentation. I encourage everyone to look at that and if anyone here or the audience has questions, please send them through our website. You can click, click and write that in and it will come to us directly. We will incorporate those in the record as this goes forward. Today's session is important to know that that we're sharing with you now a set of findings based on geography. Human geography, physical geography. Going past the technical aspects of wind generation. And so what these are, are a series of potential constraints on where wind energy towers are best located and when where they should be discouraged. This is a pretty high level analysis. It's done section by section or square mile per square mile. There's, there will be room for, you know, much more granular planning detail as this moves forward. But in starting with this, we wanted to present something that showed what are some of those major constraints that we will see going forward. And so we've really got six broad criteria that we used. And I want to stop kind of quickly for a moment and recognize one of our planners. This is the continued work of Joshua Warwick, who had put together the best available science presentations that you've seen and has been, you know, almost literally up to his ears in this research over the last year or so with national research and collaborating with other counties, Whitman County, Benton County, Grant County and others. So we're grateful for his work. Anyway, we've got these, he's right behind me. Right there. So you can see, yeah, it's kind of these, these broad criteria. The, the, you know, certainly the basic one, what are average wind velocities in the county? And what does that lead to for energy generation? What are critical areas? Turnbull has its own special designation, as does Fairchild. Then other biodiversity areas, and then of course ag lands as they are zoned, large tract, small tract, but also carry in some cases the title of lands of statewide significance. And when you get down to the soils level, USDA prime soils or not prime soils. So we're looking, like I said, now we're looking at the geography of the county. Here's the initial map of what we would consider wind speeds. And you can see the lowest one that is feasible is at 5.8 to 6 meters per second. That's the gold. And then the six to seven is the more lilac moving into the fuchsia at seven to eight. Mostly though, you can see in a sense, the obvious, the the possibility of harnessing wind energy is in the southern part of the county, notably from the southeast corner up to the river as we move over towards Stevens County. So that, that is in a sense, the basic landscape of where the initial feasibility would be looking at. Which is, you know, not to say that you can see the higher winds up around Mount Spokane. That hasn't been proposed for anything that we've seen so far. Critical areas. And in one sense, the entire county is part of that. It's a little, I don't say misleading, but it's the, the gray that is the background color on the entire map is aquifer protection area, but it's the low impact area. So it does cover the entire county, but that is one that is a lower impact. The, the greens and the tans and the others are higher impact areas for wetlands and other pieces. Not surprisingly, down into the channeled scablands through Cheney in the southwestern part of the county versus the Palouse, which is free of many of these environmental constraints. Turnbull by itself. You know, 23,000 acres, you can see the diver, the biological diversity that is supported by Turnbull. And, you know, it's important to realize there's some other information as we move in here. It's not just a rest stop on a flyway. It's a, it has resident facilities. It has birds that come and go, and so it's not just a fly in, fly out approach. And of course it has more than, than avi, or aviary species. So, and this is, is supported by the federal department as well as the state's departments here. So other parts, you can see quite a lot of area, 44,000 acres. The channeled scablands. The composition of that. And then wetlands and aquifers. The first two paragraphs up here are from conversations between our staff and the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And what you can see is their contest or their, they're telling you that one of the challenges in the found, is in the foundations is actually setting these up. As you might imagine, they're trying to capture wind energy rather than let wind energy push them over. And that requires substantial foundations and substantial engineering. The challenge in the southern southwestern part of our county is in those scablands, water tables are quite high. There are differing layers on the aquifers that are outside of the Rathston Prairie Spokane Valley Aquifer. And if, if you were to drive a foundation through the water table, through a cap of a layered aquifer, then water and contaminants can move back and forth within those layers. And that is not a good thing. It can also, it's like I said, if you, if you break that water table, it can affect the groundwater of nearby farms and ranches as well. So it is, is not a trivial point. Yes, sir. Well, that's, that's part of the, part of it is, should it be there at all? And then secondly, can it, is there an engineering solution that is acceptable? Wells. Domestic water wells can be drilled in these areas and they can be sealed and cased as they go down. So. Well, the question is, should it be drained? There, the wetlands out here serve a very important purpose and wetlands are generally protected. You cannot drain or fill a wetland without some sort of mitigation, either replacement or some other quality of that. And here you can see the, the, you know, Turnbull identifies what they call kind of the short flights where birds are in one spot and they just hop up and go somewhere else. Those short flights are very much in the altitude range of the turbine blades. So it's not that they're all going to fly over the top. It's going to be up and down within that. And of course, we, we our, our last line up there, it's like, it's very difficult to get the birds to move. So we have to kind of work within that constraint. Biodiversity areas. The Columbia Plateau Regional Biodiversity Area is a marked mapped area. You can see the designation here. Again, not surprisingly, it comes through that same high critical area basin up through the eastern side of Cheney over toward Hangman Creek and, and up into the, almost into the Dishman Hills area. And a, on a basis. So another constraint to easy development. And I do want to emphasize, and we will at the end as well, the when we say these are constraints, they're not prohibitions, they're not conclusions, they are findings. And they're also not recommendations. We said this is a high level look and we do it section by section. When, if an application is made, well, first off, as, as this gets more detailed and we will be briefing you and the board again to get through that, then there will be areas that the county may say are prohibition areas. And then there are areas that are open for exploration. If they're open for exploration, it'll be with these constraints in mind. You bring us something that mitigates these constraints and we will consider that, that application. At this point, you know, it's, it's a guiding, guiding principle. So. Again, some of the species that are involved in those biodiversity areas. Sometimes more than, than many of us think, when we don't see a lot of those around our, our backyards. And then finally, on the key areas. This is not as much a geographic constraint. As you recall from the wind map, the winds are strong in the southeast part of the county. This is more of a regulatory side because that area in the Palouse is for the vast majority is large tract agriculture and therefore protected by the Growth Management Act from degradation of agricultural resources. So in, in an area here, there are less environmental constraints, but there are constraints by law. So, oh, and I'm sorry, here's, this is the prime egg soils map. The green is, is, is USDA prime egg. The blue is egg if it's irrigated and the red are not prime egg soils. Not at all surprising, given even the early map on critical areas. The, the scablands are not egg, they're not, they're not, they're for crops, you know, grazing or animal husbandry, but they're not prime egg soils. Couple of things just kind of for the record and to let others know that this is not simply a Spokane County investigation. We do have guidance from, from the statutes and the administrative rules of Washington. In, for example, the RCWs, it talks about non-egg uses cannot be located outside of an area already developed for those buildings and shall not otherwise convert more than one acre of ag land to non-egg use. That's a, this outright factual statement, it is in the law. We have to work around or, or work within those constraints. And yet the not limit agricultural production. So the, the constraints from the law in ag are there to protect ag and also allow for accessory uses that support agriculture. And one of those that we have spoken with you before is recognizing that agriculture is one of the riskiest businesses ever to be in. And the ability to have our farms stay in production from generation to generation. And the ability to have our farms stay in production from generation to generation, or even to be bought and sold and kept in production. Having alternate income streams, we recognize is a very important opportunity for landowners, whether it's in, in farming or ranching, to try to mitigate, you know, a bad crop season. Today's paper was talking about how there's been so little rain on the Palouse that crops that were planted in the spring are starting to suffer. That seems to be a more recurring pattern than we've seen in the past in Spokane County. How's that going to affect our ag in the future? Should there be other sources of revenue for those folks that are invested in the land? And this one does talk about, you know, providing clarity and support renewable energy goals. So as you are sometimes painfully aware, the Growth Management Act has many contradictions. It has many inconsistencies in it. We see some of that here in statutes and rules. There, there's prob, there's protection of agricultural resources, but there is interest in promoting renewable energy. And the question that we've been going through for a year is, how do you blend those two mandates? And that's what we've been doing in producing this constraint system. So you can see here, it's kind of the basics of, of what we're talking about. And we had mentioned this in earlier presentations that part of it is, is what are the impacts as these are built? When large roads have to be installed for the simple weight of carrying this equipment across land. Those roads are essentially decommissioned and smaller farm roads are in there linking the facilities during their operation. And we've pointed out that, that it's not often thought about, but a decommissioning plan is essential. The idea of these, every mechanical thing has a lifespan. Is it 10 years? Is it 20? Is it 30? Are they replaced or are they abandoned? And we need to be sure that, much like mining, that there is a reclamation program that the land in especially an ag is restored to its previous condition when the lifespan of these is passed. So here's kind of the basics of what all that comes down to. Trying to get the prime wind areas, but staying away from Fairchild, staying away from Turnbull. Obviously staying away from the cities. The ag lands have to have some compatibility. And the, the last statement is, is that yes, we're still studying this at the 50,000 foot level. As we dig into it, as we said, with more granularity, we will likely find both opportunities and additional constraints on smaller parcels of land. This is what all of that looks like on the, on a county map. So what you can see, the, the big circle is the 15 mile radius from the center of the Fairchild runway. That encompasses a lot of territory. And Fairchild has, has proposed this at a state level as well for military, and not just for themselves, but for all military airfields in the state. Their position is, is sort of an obvious one. They, their current mission runs very heavy airplanes, often full of fuel. Those do not climb like a passenger plane coming out of Spokane International. If they can't go at a more gradual rate in some things, because there's height obstructions from wind fields, wind in those areas, not just on their flight patterns, but on, you know, deviations or emergency routes or things like that, that puts the base at risk. When any base is at risk, they look at, the federal government looks at, as some of you have been through the BRAC or Base Realignment and Closing Act. Anything that puts a risk at the mission of the base puts this at risk of going away. And then you can see the rest of it. And so what you, what you really see, the concluding factor is those six sections in the southeast corner are the ones that have the fewest constraints. So the only issue on these is what we said a little bit earlier, and that's the lands of agricultural significance. So if, if we are to present to you the path of least resistance for wind turbines based on these criteria, and, and there's, there's no guarantee that we have identified every only, and the only important criterias, criterion for this, there could be others, but given where we've gone, these six sections are the ones that have the fewest constraints. And so with that, I'll stop and answer any questions. Again, I'll remind the, Mr. Chairman, we do have additional slides that have some of the basic science on them on heights and setbacks and other things, if people are interested. We wanted today to focus on what that constraint map looked like. And I'll put that back up. And if you want to either minimize or, or take that, put it anywhere. Anyway, we're open to questions and comments from the commission. As you're thinking about that, our next steps, we are meeting with the Board of County Commissioners on the, on August 11th for their quarterly comp plan 46 briefing. We'll be bringing the summary of this along with any comments you have to them on the 11th. We are starting a series of virtual open houses every first Wednesday of the month, starting August 6th at noon. Kind of a brown bag, virtual only. Our first one is going to be on climate and, and energy, or climate and resiliency. So there, we're starting to touch on these aspects. And then as a couple of you indicated at our last meeting, we're going to be setting up a, a subcommittee for the comp plan specifically to focus element by element as we move forward. So this is, this is yet another step in front of you. We will, as I said, we'll take it to the commissioners for their guidance on, on how to proceed. And we will move in that direction. We will bring that result back to you later in the fall. This will be put into the environmental impact statement analysis, ultimately resulting in development codes for the county. And those draft codes are likely in the, probably the second quarter of 2026. Mr. Chairman, anything, any questions you may have?
Thank you, Scott.
Commissioners?
I have a few questions. I'll try not to take too many questions. But.
We're, we're paid to be here all day, take all the time you want.
We're not.
Point taken.
Maybe just a comment rather than a question exactly, but the current federal administration is not friendly to renewable energy sources. And I realize that this is taking a long view, outlasting more than one federal administration. And I happen to believe that we do, we probably do need renewable energy sources. But I just wonder how that's all, if it does at all, factor into the development code that you're contemplating being able to write.
It does not factor into the work we are doing. We are approaching this from a best available science and like I said, human and physical geography perspective from planner's perspective. And putting that in front of you representing the public to add a public policy layer to that. It's certainly up to the commissioners to act in any way they see fit.
Of course. I helped the city of Spokane write their critical areas ordinances several years past. Wetlands are not untouchable, but pretty much untouchable, depends on what class they are.
And, and scale.
At scale, right. The ones out there on the west plains around the Cheney area, the channeled scablands are critical to their, to their wildlife, to a lot of functions that they have out there. So I would hope that that doesn't, that, that doesn't get looked at in any way that's contemplated. Doesn't sound like it is. From your map, I can see that it does not. And you're talking about new roads that can support heavy equipment having to be built. And I know that a lot of the roads, having driven them, the little farm roads that connect places and people are seasonal. So I don't know that they would be suitable for redevelopment.
We, we understand that that is not the case, that, that there in fact has to be, you know, the, the version of a logging road. You're going to have to have a road of sufficient engineered capacity to carry an 80,000 pound trailer. And that, you know, a, a farm road will, will buckle under that almost instantly, under any weather, weather conditions. Now that said, representatives of Cordelia Power are in the audience and can answer some of those specific questions if you'd like.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a question, if I could please. In better understanding, of course, these maps are of great value and I've, I respect the wind and so forth. But what we're going to be looking at is, this is for the whole Spokane County. Or now are we going to start talking more into certain areas that we want to find how it can be used? Or how are we going to be generalizing our direction of the windmill guidelines, if you would please?
Our, our approach today or to date is to use this sort of countywide overlay approach of saying, let's look at these constraints countywide. You know, where is the wind? Where are the wetlands? Where's the hazards, so to speak? It may, you know, we'll look to you for guidance on, as this gets more and more detailed, whether that becomes something that goes into the zoning code for specific rural areas or whether that become, continues to say an overlay that is enforced, much like a, a PUD overlay that, that adds a series of regulations and opportunities that are different from the base layer underneath, the base zoning layer underneath. But we think in the longer run, the overlay has a, a better chance of providing direction and guidance to companies investing in this, because you won't have to look at specific zoning codes and say, does it fit here? Is that, is the set of constraints here different from rural traditional? Is it different in large tract ag? Whereas this would provide a, a, a simple set of rules and regs countywide.
So as I'm thinking through and listening to all this stuff happening, the information gathering, these are going to be used as guidelines, as an overlay then to the county for certain areas then for windmill.
That's our starting point. Like I said, we're, we're going to, as you bring public policy guidance to the discussion and the commissioners, if the desire is to move it into a true zoning category, we can do that. This would be a, a zone of its own. It would, it would, it would not be outside of the zoning code. It would be memorialized in the zoning code or in the development code itself. But it would apply as an overlay. In a sense, we've, we've done this with, again, with Fairchild. We have, you know, airport zoning and protections in place, but there's also a Fairchild overlay that doesn't matter what zone is underneath it, certain things have to be done. This is analogous to that.
Thank you.
But it's, yeah, because this is a starting point. If it's determined that it's more effective to make it in a more, you know, detailed version, we'll move in that direction.
Of course, we all know my memory is perfect. But we talked when we went through this some time ago, if I understood correctly, that if we don't do anything, state law will come in and mandate this aspect of activity in our county, is that?
That's sort of true. It's a little simplified. There is a statewide committee created, the Energy Facility Siting Committee, commonly called FSEC. They have the authority to place area installations of statewide importance and can overrule local codes if necessary. They have been used in wind powers in the Horse Heaven Hills area, most recently when Governor Inslee was in office. Spokane County, we believe, is desirous to create a code locally so that we have a statement of public policy and regulations, say, this represents the, both the values of the people of Spokane County and the ecological and environmental resources of the county and the, and the, and as well as our basic ag economy. If that's the case, applicants can still choose to go to the state for their permitting. But we have a, a more robust seat at that table to say, if you're going through this operation, even though you have the legal authority to overrule these, this is a statement that we feel is legally sound and scientifically sound in guiding that. So we want to have that ability regardless. But yes, there still exists a state body that can do this on its own.
Thank you. Is, is that upon the wishes of the request for the individuals that want to put towers up? Or is that based upon, I mean, we're spending our time at this, doing this, and yet I don't want to be circumvented either by the energy.
Our, our point, Clyde, is, is it, the permitting path is at the applicant's request. And again, Cordial, Cordial Power can talk about that. We've, what we want to have is Spokane County wants to have a voice at that table. Right now, we don't. With our, our regulations are silent. They don't support. In, in one sense, by not having a, a permitting system, they're outright prohibited. But that simply opens up the door to going to a state agency and say that, well, there's nothing here that lets me do this. I need your permission to do this. This process will give the county a, a voice in that system. But it is up to the applicant on how they choose to, to go through the permitting system.
And the enforcement of those policies and procedures will be handled through the, your department then?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Just ask.
If, if, yes, I didn't mean to be, to be flippant. We, we administer, the planning department administers the zoning code, the shoreline management program and the critical areas ordinance. That's, that's our set of portfolios. Building has building permits, Public Works has their thing. This will fall under our portfolio. So as we write this code, the violations will be, will be considered as well. And, and, you know, they, they could be anything from fairly trivial to, you know, fairly major.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's.
That's okay. I'll help. At some point, I, I would like to address the enforceability of any of the ordinances that are under consideration, whether it's some kind of a bonding mechanism or some, I mean, especially if you're thinking about requiring, when it's ready to be decommissioned, you have to take it down and restore it to whatever the condition was beforehand. I've seen people walk away from a requirement like that before. So there needs to be something, maybe along with the permit. There's like an increased fee or bond or something of that nature to make sure of it. And two, at one point sometime back, you showed us a slide that said, you know, at one point, the wind towers used to be this height. Now they're gigantic. I'm thinking of the ones along the gorge. I don't know how tall they are. They've been there for a while. But that was really helpful for visualizing what we could be looking at. And I think that aesthetic concerns are pretty important in our beautiful community, means beautiful to me. I lived here my whole life, so I'm really prejudiced, but those are some, some thoughts I had.
Yes, we've, we do have that, that graphic right here. One of the things that Joshua discovered is that setting a height on the turbine is not really good public policy because the technology does change. And allowing that, the height to fluctuate to make it, you know, the point is, if you're, if you're going to support this, you want it to be as efficient as possible. And that's the case that you, you work through the constraints of, if it's a taller turbine house and blade, then the setbacks for a collapse have to be adjusted in a different way. But the best available practice is, is not to put a limit on the height of the tower itself.
Statue of Liberty, that's an astonishing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great graphic. Is there any correlation between the number of birds killed with the tower height?
I haven't seen anything. There have been, there was a study not too long ago, sort of related, that if one of the blades was painted a contrasting color, it had a dramatic effect at decreasing bird strikes.
Is that being practiced?
We haven't looked, Clyde. I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't recall. Do you, you remember that? No, it was in a scientific journal. Understood. This is, this is an unusual thing for our county, uh, and we want to take careful steps to understand it as best we can before we ask you for a recommendation.
Are we done? Everybody's got to speak.
Speaking of careful steps. Um, we have, um, some yellow slips here in this indicates these are folks that want to testify, but before. And there's three minute limit and we have a timekeeper or we did, what happened? You can do that for us. Excellent. Let me just say, um, it would be helpful if someone wishes to say something and has not filled these out. That would be a good thing because it becomes easy for Rona to, to put these in the record, but it's not necessary. And I will recognize you if you want, but you only get one bite of the apple. So the. Just so you know, those, those are kind of the ground rules. Have I missed anything, Scott?
No, uh, that's fine. Perhaps one suggestion though.
Yes.
Would be to let, uh. Cordial Power, uh, have a chance to speak first.
I have put Mr. McLaury at the very top of this. My intuitive understanding is Cordelia Power is the, uh, is the applicant, so, um, we'll have the most to present.
Okay.
So let's start with, uh, with Mr. Lowry. Welcome.
No, you're okay, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thanks very much. Am I being timed here? I'll be. I'll do my.
Let's, let's, before you start, let's have a little quick discussion about that.
Please.
So, um. The, um. The predicate of all of this discussion today. I, it's my understanding is kind of rest on probably the body of knowledge you're about to tell us and your understanding. Um, I'm willing to be a little more lenient on the presenter, but, um, just because you have so much to convey. But let's, if you could keep within the three months, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure.
But thank you for coming and being a part of this.
Absolutely. And thank, thank you for having me. Um, so I'll, I'll keep it to three minutes, but then I'm also, you know, very available for questions.
Oh, great.
And my colleagues with me, so, um. Thank you. My name is McLaury. I'm Vice President of Development for Cordelia Power. Who Cordelia Power is, we're a renewable energy company. Um, we develop, own and operate. The traditional suite of renewable energy projects, wind, uh, solar, battery storage. We have about 1.7 gigawatts, probably the better metric. We have 18 operating wind projects throughout the U.S. and Canada right now. Um, our growth is pretty substantial. Primary growth is focused in the Western U.S. and the Midwest. Um, so, uh, Minnesota, Illinois, Ohio, those areas. Because we're an owner operator and there's a bit of a differentiation, we, we don't develop projects and then sell them. We, our, our business model is about long-term operation. We're very focused on the community engagement being active participants in the community. I won't get into a lot of the detail. I can in questions. We, we're very interested in Spokane County. Uh, we are developing our Riverside Wind Project, which is down in the Fairfield area, the, the sort of green townships that were highlighted. Uh, we're also investigating early stage development, um, in the southwest of Cheney area. I really want to, I want to commend the work that Scott and Josh have done here. We're. And I think you'll hear this from most developers, we want a strong, um. County code to support our projects in a balanced way. So we had a discussion about FSEC. We have no interest in getting approval at the state level. What we want to do is, um, work with the local community, the county to get approval for our projects in that way. There is legitimate concerns about wind sighting. Um, right? There's good places for wind projects. There's not so good places for wind projects. It's not a new technology anymore. Um, there's been operating projects throughout the U.S. for, um, you know, 30, 40 years at the scale that we're talking about. There's a lot of experience that we can draw upon that and, you know, craft a good ordinance, a good code. And, and Scott and Josh have done a lot of that work. Let me just quickly talk about our development process because I think it's, 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 it's very germane to this discussion. From, from the, the time that we identify a potential area to actually constructing a project. Is typically in the five to eight years. We have identified areas in Spokane County. We're about a year into talking to local landowners. My point being is these projects are not imminent by any means. And they're a planning process in a, of themselves. So we look at sort of fundamentals. Is it windy? Is there transmission close by? Uh, is there a market to buy our power? Um, is the terrain such that we think it's constructible? We draw a big circle on the map. We go out, we start meeting with the community. Um, we, uh, engage the agencies that are involved in permitting. And we refine the project through that five years. Um, and so that's what we're in right now. That's the reason we have, you know, had meetings with WDFW. That's the reason we've been out in Fairfield and had open houses. And received impact. The project looks a whole lot different than the original map that we drew. It's going to continue to be refined and designed to meet the needs of the community and mitigate. It's my three minutes. Okay, thank you. So, um. I'll, I'll stop there on that. There's a lot of questions. Um, I'm sure there are coming up that I can answer. The other thing I will say is, you know, Scott and Josh have brought up numerous constraints. There's, it's not just about the CUP or the FSEC process. There's a whole host of other approvals we need. So with the airspace, we have to go through the Federal Aviation Administration, get permits. I guarantee you that will adequately protect the airbase, right? And the constraints that come out of that. There's the SEPA. So I'll stop there. Yep, I will not leave. Okay. Please, and, and I'll ju, I'll just note that, uh, a couple of my colleagues also will be, or, or one other colleague will be coming up and talking about some of the community benefits. That we see associated with this project.
I want to express a concern about one procedural factor.
Please.
And that's your time. And I'm saying that because what? The county is asking us to do is approve a bunch of Snake River dams. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't want to be the one they're talking about 40 years from now when they want to tear them down or they don't want to tear them down. So learning all the consequence, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, we, we built four dams and, and ever since then, there's been this enormous political energy to tear them down and. I'm a yo-yo. I mean. Sometimes I, I think they ought to all go away and sometimes I think it's crazy. And I'm, if we're making decisions, I'd hate to have a three minute time limit affect our ability to get in information. To make a wise decision. That's all I want to say.
Certainly, and, and I, I will just share with you, we're, you know, we're in direct communication with Scott and Josh and we're, you know, we're not. Restrained to three minutes when we're talking to them.
Well. Do we have more to submit? I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to curtail valuable information, but I don't want to elongate the discussion to the point where. Um, it's not useful. Uh, the minutia, I mean, can probably triumph. Um, a lot of matters here, and I don't want to get into that. I, I wouldn't understand it anyway. I need kind of the big broad brush sort of approach. Um, so if you'd like to, if there's some points we didn't admit that we, you, you feel bear amplification, now would be a good time. We have some, some great folks here that want to talk, and I think Clyde wants to say something.
I have a special need. I need to be more, I need more education.
Okay, well then.
I don't know how else to say it.
We will yield to your, your wisdom, Clyde. How much more time would you like?
Whatever. Because this. To me, as everybody is pointing out, this is not just today, this is. 18 years down the road that it's going to be in effect and, and I want to be able to make. The right direction that we're going to be going and I'm, I'm gathering information. And to me, I can't believe that we need to be cutting that one short. That's just me. I'd like to see it go on a little bit if we could, please.
First of all, we didn't, the, the three minutes went to about six minutes and that's okay.
I didn't realize that it went.
It looks like we, we had maybe some confusion on how to get the timer working, but you know, I'm happy to accommodate the will of the commission. What would you suggest?
I would suggest Scott can, there's a lot of information here that we're needed. Is that correct that you want us to be looking at?
Yes, uh, yes, there is. Um. The, uh, the chairman did have a pretty succinct point, though. We're talking about before you a very broad based set of criteria for doing this. I think what, uh, the team here can bring to you is what some of that detail looks like. But it, there may be more detail than is warranted today. Uh, but I would, I would volunteer that, that the information being presented by Cordelia Power is valuable and we should take, give them a chance to, to listen. Or to speak. Recognizing we do have others in the audience that, that are here spending their time and they want to be heard as well.
That is correct. I don't want to unfairly disproportionate, uh, the, the will of the, of those who want to talk as well. The chair will be happy to let you continue if you feel like there are salient, um, facts that need to be. Still presented. Um, obviously the commission would like to hear more, a more total presentation, I suppose. Would you like to do that?
I think I would like to make two quick points.
Please do.
And, and, and then, uh.
Well, let's use a.
Sit down and be available to answer any questions, but I will also say we're here, we're available and we will continue to engage as this planning process.
I think that's a great process.
Oh, yeah, well, honey, please.
Um, how many windmills are you guys wanting to propose to bring to our air?
Yeah, so the.
Question number one. Question number two, what kind of tax revenue is actually going to bring our count?
Yeah, yeah.
And the third question is. You have 18 working windmills in the United States right now. What kind of revenue are you guys producing annually as a company?
Yeah, so there's, um. Let's start, let's start with the first question. Um, in, in the, what we are calling our Riverside Project, so in the south, uh, southeast of the county. We're looking at a 200 megawatt project. So in aggregate, that's the amount of energy that's being produced. We have not chosen a turbine that will take some time, but likely it's going to be somewhere in the area of 40 wind turbines. For that entire project. And similar sized project that we are looking in the, in the southwest of the county. Second question was tax revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I do not have detailed analysis that I can, you know, provide you, um, and. But we're talking, um. You know, multiple millions of dollars of annual tax revenue from the singular project. Washington State has a bit of a complicated tax code. Um, and we are very much advocating, uh, for reform on that, which will allow the counties i- it to be more transparent. On exactly how much money will be flowing. It will, you know, what we're also advocating is that. Um, we're able to enter what we refer to in the industry as a pilot. Um, so a payment in lieu of taxes. So essentially it's a bilateral agreement between the project and the county. That guarantees a tax base over the life of the project. Um, and so that really helps for budgeting and planning. And I'm, I'm fairly confident that we'll get there in the next, you know, year to two years, certainly in the timeframe of the projects. What is our annual revenue? I don't, I don't know, sir, to be honest. Um, yeah, um, but what I will say is, you know, these are. Uh, these are large capital projects. We're talking, you know, the cost of, of a project like we're proposing in the southeast will be north of 500 million. U.S. dollars in capital expenditure and we'll be looking for a rate of return. That is somewhere in that, you know, industry standard 10% rate of return. Yep.
If, if I could jump in real quickly, excuse me. The Washington State Association of Counties, uh, through its elected group, as well as through the planning directors. Are also looking at the tax structure of how these will affect state and notably county taxes. So it's a body of work that's good being, being worked on, uh, as well, and we, we have some of that information we shared briefly last time. That's been. Detailed more and we'll bring that back to you in a future aspect.
I had a very generic question. Uh, with 18 different sites throughout. North America, shall we say, in general. Um, you, you have certain guidelines that you have been, that you're functioning under with those 18. Are you using those as a general guideline then that you'd like to see us work with? I'm trying to find out where you want to be.
Right.
And, and because. Everyone cannot be different. I, I wouldn't assume, would they?
What, what I would say is the guidelines with tho, those projects were developed over not several decades, but say 15 years. The guidelines have changed to the better. Um, and, and so there is an industry standard right now, which I think Scott and Josh are very close to with the current drafting of the ordinance. That's where we want to be. Um, you know, and, and there's some, there's some nuance and some discussion about particular points. We also as a company have standards that go over and above that. So, um, for example. Uh, the Federal Aviation Lighting System, you, you mentioned, uh, Commissioner Whitzenack, um, uh, aesthetics. So we as a company do not put those flashing red lights. That you see on top of, uh, uh, the wind towers. What we do is we install a system. They're still there. But they only turn on when an airplane, um, is within three miles of the project. So that means about 98% of the year, those lights are off. Those are things we do over and above. Community benefit agreements, it's a standard. So we will have a pot of money from the project that it can be structured in a number of ways that will flow directly to the community. Um, which isn't, that's not a requirement in a code or anything. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. That was good. Um, I know in Spokane County, we have dealt with, uh. Billboards and we always have a situation of scenic view. And of course, there's been some conversation of, you know, how close some of these seems to be.
Yep.
How, what is your feeling of that? Uh. Uh, because I'm very much so concerned about the scenic view. What's going on?
Yeah, well, first of all, I will say that, um, perception on wind towers is very personal. So, um, to some people, they, uh, fit nicely in the landscape. To other people, they are, um. They don't like them at all. Um, the, the draft code, as I've reviewed it, has, um, the requirement for us to undertake. A visual impact study. And what this does is it actually models, it, it identifies, um. Key locations of interest and we are obligated to create visual models. So we can literally project up on he, on the screen, what it will look like from certain locations, what the towers will look like. And then it becomes a, a discussion and this is part of the planning process, right? So we undertake that study and we're able to refine and modify our design to mitigate those impacts.
You had two points to make.
I did.
If we were, so.
No.
I barred my comment, which are good. This is fine, but please continue with your two points you wanted to make.
Yeah, so, so the first point I would make is, um. I, I would. I would recommend that while this policy, this code is being drafted, it's not exclusionary. Um, so. Not drawing circles on the map and saying this is not a good spot. We, we won't permit wind towers in this area. Um, instead I recommend that that is done at the conditional use permitting process. Uh, and, and it's, it's for two reasons. One, it's because, uh, the. One, it's because, uh, there's a lot of opportunity for us to design and refine our projects to mitigate impacts. Fairchild being one example. If you draw an exclusionary around fifteen miles around Fairchild, that precludes us from working with the Department of Defense and identifying whether there are, you know, turbines that can be sited in there and still allow them to undertake their operations. So I'll, uh, I'll stop there really quickly and my, uh, I've lost my second point, so it may come up.
Okay. We will, um, put that aside. If you think of it, um, I'll, um, re-invite you to the stand.
Thank you.
Um, additional questions?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead.
Do you have other locations in Washington state that your company is presently operating in?
We, we, uh, so we do not have any projects that are built and operating in Washington state. We have several on the order of, uh, six to eight development phase projects. And it's worth noting that we have one, our Wheatland Wind Project that is in Lincoln County. And we have just gone through this process with Lincoln County where they have developed an ordinance. And we also have projects, you know, west of the Cascades. We have, uh, a project down in Adams County. So short answer is yes.
I just have one observation. Um, having gone through quite the roller coaster of property taxes increasing for the last several years. I appreciate the fact that you want to advocate for a, here's what we, here's what we'll pay and here's what we'll give you, um, approach. That would be nice.
Hmm.
For all of this. And two, I appreciate your input into the, um, drafting of Spokane County's ordinance and providing, um, expertise to the planning department. I just, I always have a hang up about planners being lobbied for the code that the proponent wants. It doesn't sound like that's happening. I just want to make a note of it. And then the, the last thing is I didn't hear anything about noise and I know that that is one of the things that that wind farm installations has been a concern to different communities, more in the Midwest, I think. Where they're on farmland, for instance. And so I, and I don't even know if there's anything that can be done to like install a muffler in turbine. So those are just my questions and observations.
Okay. Let me take the last one first on noise. Um, so it's, uh, it's a concern with citing. It's a, it's a potential impact. Um, there are standards um, that, you know, in the current draft code that, uh, that the planning group has written considers. Let me just explain how it works. Basically there's a decibel level at occupied buildings um, that the project cannot exceed. And that decibel level, that noise level is like the equivalent of, um, a washing machine in the adjacent room. So it would not disturb a conversation that we're having. We're obligated to model that before the project is, um, approved. And then in the years following, confirm that we are meeting that standard um, by literally putting microphones at those certain reci- receptor places. There are, um, not mufflers, but similar to mufflers, there are things that can be done um, to mitigate that. Uh, one is called, uh, you, you put a serrated trailing edge on the blade. Um, so you adjust the blade design and that reduces, um, the noise. But where the issue mainly came up was in older technology. So we talked about the turbines being taller. The result and, and, and it's quite drastic how tall they're getting now. Um, the result of that is there's a whole lot fewer of them. So they generate more power per individual turbine, which means we're able to spread them out, keep them farther away um, from homes and, and, uh, and non-participating landowners. They spin a whole lot slower. So from an aesthetic and from a wildlife consideration, um, they're much less of an impact through the newer technology. Stop there. Uh, sorry, there were two other questions I, that, okay. Yeah.
That you are advocating to the state. Last, there's other, like, see the P E Ds or you can apply it appropriately. That was just an observation and just making sure that even though you're supplying a lot of technical information to the planning department here and probably doing other counties too, that are trying to catch up with the learning curve on getting their codes up to date. So that these wind farms can be built. Just to make sure that Spokane County and what Spokane County needs is paramount. Mainly, that's my observation.
Understood. I, I appreciate the perceived conflict and, you know, what I can say is we are looking for a balanced code and the information we provide will be peer reviewed. Um, and while it may come from this industry associations, we consider it to be balanced.
Mr. Chairman, uh, let me weigh in for a second. Maybe it's a point of personal privilege as much as anything else. Um, I have been in this business for more than thirty-two years, um, twenty of that in private practice, helping communities rebuild themselves. I see the value of cooperating and collaborating with the private sector, with those that are investing in our community. It's a huge advantage. Oftentimes, public planning puts that at, at arms length. Uh, we see, I've, I've, the experience of, that I've, I've had in my career shows, shows me that that's valuable. That said, uh, uh, as a certified planner, uh, and now having been in that role long enough that, uh, the association has put me into life membership, which used to think was a good thing. Now it's just like, well, you've got white hair. You've been around a while. Uh, we operate under a very extensive code of ethics that handles issues like this. Any certified planner, you know, I, I put my, my certification at risk if there is a complaint that we have behaved unethically. Uh, so that will not happen in Spokane County.
I apologize. I didn't mean to.
I know.
Cast any aspersion on the, I just, as a planner in the public sector and having been a certified planner myself, I know that you often get great information from the private sector when you're trying to craft these.
Yes.
Codes. So, uh, I just want to make sure that, and I know that you've already spoken to this and so have several other people. What is, what is right for Spokane County? How do we right-size it for our county? So that's, that's all I was wanting to.
What you've, what all of you have seen, you know, the work that Joshua has produced.
Amazing.
Has tapped into peer reviewed journals, has tapped into the scientific side, it's tapped into university research as well as power company research. So we, we feel we're compiling, uh, an appendix of valuable data that takes into account the industry's ability to, uh, to provide a service that is desirable, along with the county's need to protect its other resources. That's, that's why we're going through this entire constraint idea is, is how are we going to balance that, that need?
Kudos, kudos to your staff. I mean, Josh, that's, this is a great body of work that you've pulled together.
I'm one of Max's colleagues and, uh, one of the things that we.
Please come to the thing and your name and everything, you know, comes to record.
One of the things that we put together.
Name is?
Oh, my name is Monty Tenclam with Tenaska Energy.
Okay.
And we're the developer, uh, with Cordelia on this project. One of the, in, in answer to your question, and I think it's a, a great point. Uh, one of the things that we submitted is a, a binder full of information. It's mostly peer reviewed documents that, you know, they don't come off Facebook, they come from studies. But there's a document in there called the Iowa Siding Board Guidance, uh, for counties setting up, uh, zoning ordinances. And probably the most, uh, contentious topic when you go to put together a zoning ordinance is the setbacks. And that's where you see that some developers will push for stuff that is, uh, more beneficial to them. And what we want to see is something that works for the county, but we also want it to work for us so we can develop a project. Um, when you look at the Iowa siding boards and you look at the numbers that are in the current zoning ordinance, yours, your numbers are less restrictive, uh, are further away than what the Iowa Siding Board recommends, but there are numbers that we think we can work with. And so I, I think that's important to point out, we're not advocating for closer numbers. FSEC is generally pretty, uh, standard in what they approve and recommend in, uh, for non-participating landowners, usually four times the height of the turbine. Um, your numbers are very similar to that. That's very similar to what we advocated for in Lincoln County when we worked on this process. But I, I, I think you have a really great point and I just, I want you to know where we're coming from on that because we see this as a long-term relationship. We're going to be here as Cordelia is going to be the developer and owner operator of this project. We want to be part of your community. We want to be a contributing part of it and we don't want to start off our relationship in an adversarial where we've advocated for something that you find doesn't work for you in the community. So when we say we'll be here throughout the life of this process, we intend on being here for not only the life of this zoning ordinance development, but also the life of the project as well. And we want to be a, a good contributing part of your community. So if you have questions going forward, as you get a chance to look at that binder, there's a lot of information in it. The first page has a list of all the documents that are in there. If you find stuff that you have other questions on that you'd like to, um, ask us, please, please bring, you know, please let Scott know. And, uh, we'll, we are happy to come in and talk at whatever time you'd like us to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pete, you had a question. I saw your light on over there.
Is vandalism or terrorism an, an event that's you've had to deal with?
Vandalism is. But at not a catastrophic scale.
So far.
Yeah, and, and that, that's over, you know, two decades of operating projects. Um, so, uh, you know, it's something that we, um, we can mitigate through fencing, gating, et cetera, um, through cameras as well. Um, everything we do on the property is in conjunction with the landowner who we're leasing. But they're pretty low impact events that we've had.
Likely spray paint.
We've had spray paint. We've had an example of someone that thought it might be fun to drink their beers with their friends in the bottom of the turbine and, and pulled off a door um, with a winch, these sorts of things, but they're not, they're not catastrophic and they're, and they're infrequent.
To better understand something that you had mentioned earlier, the number of turbines that you were thinking about or commented about was the number forty?
Mm-hmm. On, on, yeah.
Do I need more added to that?
Uh, I, no, for a two hundred megawatt project, we would be, we're likely going to be using a five megawatt machine. There is a scenario where it could be four and a half and maybe that number goes to forty-three or forty-six turbines, but, um, it'll be in that range.
My, my reason for that is that I can only recall driving up I ninety to the top of the, the hill up there out of Vantage. I mean, it's surrounded by, must be fifty, I could probably see right there. So we're talking about less than that within a much greater space. I mean, I, I just trying to prepare my, my thoughts of thinking.
Correct. And, and of course, you know, as we go through the development and we, um, come up with preliminary layouts, we'll be sharing that with you in the planning commission, but it's going to be much less. That is where the technology has gone. They've gone to larger turbines, producing more energy per turbine, but there's less in a particular area. And as you can imagine, the turbine spacing, the distance between them is relative to how big the blades are. Um, so the larger blades require the turbines to be farther apart. I, uh, recently developed a project south of Chicago in Illinois. Um, they had significant wind buildout in that area in the early aughts, around two thousand, much smaller turbines. It, every time it boggles my mind how many wind turbines are packed within a section of land. It will not look like that.
Last question, I promise.
That's okay.
Um, is the power sold here locally or to Seattle Power and Light or?
Great question. So, uh, specifically the, um, the project in the southeast corner is targeted around selling power to a Vista. Um, I can't say conclusively that it will inland power might be an opportunity. There also, we, we commonly do what we call corporate offtakes. So if there was, um, a large load, a large energy user in the region, we might transact with them directly through, um, the local utility. Uh, potentially, yeah. Though I, I can say unequivocally, we have not, we have not identified that opportunity in Spokane County. Yep.
As your chairman, I would like to move to more testimony on our workshop here. Have you concluded your remarks?
I have. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your patience. Thank you commissioners for your patience. Uh, this has been very, um, illuminating. There's a lot of good information that's been conveyed and we appreciate your, um, your contribution. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You bet. Um, this is in no particular order, but, uh, can we do Kel- Kellen S. Hogan, Hogan? Who, who is that? Kel- Kellen? S. Hogan, forty-five twenty-one North Woodlawn, pardon me? Oh, okay. So we'll set this aside. Okay. If you want to talk, you're on, you're ready to go. Thanks, Kellen. Um, Ted Rasmussen, Ted, would you like to come and say a few things? Come up to the mic and give us? Thank you.
But I won't. My name is Ted Rasmussen. I live in the southeast part of the county where it's all green. And, uh, I, I'm opposed to this. Um, and I just want to say a couple of things. Another point of reference, uh, the statute of liberty is three hundred and five feet. The tallest building in Spokane is Bank of America Tower at two hundred and eighty-eight feet. For more reference, the, uh, Space Needle in Seattle is somewhere around six hundred feet. At one of the meetings where, uh, the, the folks from Tenaska and Cordelia were kind enough to meet with the, with the local community, they talked about possibly a six megawatt tower. And, uh, my notes from that meeting indicate that that tower at tip height would be seven hundred and five feet. So for those of you who are concerned about aesthetics, where I live, I look out across the Rock Creek Valley and I can see houses on the other side. Now I don't know how many of them I'll be able to see because I'm going to have forty windmills out in front of me. A bunch of little miniature space needles. Beyond that, uh, that, that's the aesthetics part of this. And I know that's, that's an issue. There's a reason urban areas aren't included in this and one of them has to be aesthetics. So that, that's just where I stand on this. Apart from that, there is an issue, uh, that I've raised in some of the, uh, information that I've submitted for the record having to do with infrasound. That's a different kind of sound. It's sound that is measured in frequency. Infrasound can be such a high frequency that you can't hear it uh, or such a low frequency that you can't hear it. But it does have, according to the studies that I've submitted, uh, physiological impacts that can be adverse to, uh, living things in the animal kingdom, not just people, but animals as well. I am not a biologist. I am not a scientist, but I've read these articles. And without exception, they say that infrasound is something that needs to be taken into consideration when developing rules for having these projects because they may have, uh, adverse consequences to people uh, as well as other things in the animal, animal kingdom. The WAC that's referenced refers only to decibels. That, that has nothing to do with, 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 uh, with frequency measured in hertz. So it may be that the infrasound is not uh, serious enough to be, uh, serious enough to be taken into account in an ordinance. It may be that it is, but somebody needs to do, some independent uh, third party needs, needs to tell us whether uh, the infrasound that's created by these, when the blade hits the mast, is a serious problem health-wise for, uh, for any people included. So uh, I, I note that in the, uh, that in the first draft of the uh, ordinance that I saw, they had uh, a requirement that there be a study for shadow flicker. And I, I had submitted comments on this and I saw that in the second draft, they didn't address infrasound. The, uh, the, uh, flicker uh, study was still, was still there, but the, uh, there was nothing mentioned about infrasound. I think it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rasmussen, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So is that incorrect on the six megawatt? It's saying three hundred and twenty-eight feet news reference seven hundred and fifty feet. Is that counting blade height or is it at the knuckle?
At the meeting that we had in uh, Fairfield, I also attended the one in Spangle. At one of those meetings, uh, it was indicated that a six megawatt tower would, uh, would have a seven hundred foot uh, height at tip height. I don't know whether that's a different, I don't know what the, I don't know why that says that, but that's what we were told at the meeting.
I require some verification. So that, that number that's being referenced there is, is the nacelle, we call it. So um, the top of the tower. It is correct that six megawatt, there are six megawatt turbines designed with a tip height of um, seven hundred, seven hundred plus feet. What I can tell you is that, you know, and this is new information from when we would have met, that we will not be pursuing uh, turbines of that height in this area for two reasons. One, there's the airspace constraints. So we've done uh, third-party studies. We're going to be limited in height because of those airspace constraints. And number two, this is getting a bit technical, but there's um, uh, it's called wind shear. And it's essentially as you go higher, the wind speeds increase. This area does not have a high wind shear factor. So therefore it's not advantageous to use more expensive turbines that are higher to capture that higher ones.
So if you're going for a four megawatt or whatnot, how tall are yours?
Yeah. So I, I, if I was to put a ceiling on it, I think we're going to be somewhere in the six hundred foot, you know, the six hundred and twenty foot range. Tip height. And so, and so that's um, you know, and I'm mixing meters and feet, but with a seventy meter diameter rotor, that means the nacelle, the generating part of the project of the, of the wind turbine will be a good hundred, twenty, hundred fifty below that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just as a clarifying point, the mention of the infrasound and frequency information, we didn't bring that up today. It's, it's in our study portfolio. We are looking at that as part of our overall impact. So it's something we are aware of and we'll be, we'll, we'll be continuing.
Thank you. More questions for Mr. Rasmussen. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your coming up here. Has Tanaska said all they want to say or they want another? And your Monte? Yeah, please.
Um, so again, Monty Tenplay with Tanaska.
You got the slip here, so we're gonna.
You got the slip.
We're going to give you the, we're not giving you the slip. We're just.
No, that's all right. So I have the benefit, Mac is a renewable energy guy. I work for Tanaska. I have the benefit of being an energy guy. We do all of the above. And one of the things I want to talk about is why we think this is important to the community. Specifically, you know, what I said earlier, I'm an energy guy. I like all of the above. When you look at where energy, we see energy going over the next twenty-five years, we expect the load to double. And we can't do that with just uh, gas. It's going to require all of the available energy to supply the energy that all of our communities are going to need. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit, you, somebody brought up the point about agricultural and how we interact with agricultural. We understand the importance of the agricultural business in this community. When you look at a wind project, Mac talked about the fact that we may put up forty turbines. And to put up forty turbines, we may lease twenty to twenty-five thousand acres of land. But for those turbines, every turbine takes out about two-thirds of an acre of land out of production. So for forty turbines, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty acres of land, when you take into account the substation, out of twenty-five thousand acres that we might lease. The rest of the land can be used exactly the way that the farmers intended on using it. So, you know, compared to other forms of energy, this is very non-intrusive into what the farmers are trying to do with their land as well as diversifying you know, their income annually and the way that our lease is set up, they get a payment that they can count on every year, once we go in, actually during development, and then once we go into operations. So um, we talked, the Mac talked a little bit about the taxes. We did do a study of the taxes in the area, but Washington tax code is very difficult. And there's a lot of work that's going on at the state legislature right now to change that and to turn it into a, um, into a flat tax that would last instead of, you know, being a, a large amount at the very beginning, when the project is not depreciated and then uh, decrease over time, the way that they're proposing doing it is a flat tax where you start out, whatever you start out at the beginning, you pay all the way through the life of the project so that the county can plan on it. Other things that get done, I know, I think you all are familiar with county benefits agreements. Washington state law doesn't currently allow a community benefit agreement is the way that we understand it, most of people we've talked to, but they are working on that. Cordelia Normie does uh, community benefit agreements within the community. We put together a pool of money that they donate. Usually the county commissioners or the local community puts together a board that decides how the money gets used. Um, and then we really leave it up to the community to decide where that money goes. And then, you know, we talked about the benefits of, of just payments to landowners as well. But another piece that's really important, I think to Cordelia and haven't worked with a bunch of other developers, when you go out into the community and talk to landowners about our team, what you will find is that when we got here and started working, we got involved in the community. We've uh, donated to the Cheney Rodeo. We sponsored the bowl, uh, you know, the bowl shoot this year. We participate with the, uh, one of the local jazz festivals. We sponsor, for the last two years, we've sponsored the Tico Swim Bus. We, all of our guy, all of our guys and girls go out, uh, we, we go out and help the food banks pack food. We donate the animals from the lives, junior livestock that we buy. If, uh, if we don't give them back to the child, then we go and we donate them to the food banks. We mean it when we say we want to be a good part of your community and we want to work with you through this process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions for me?
Uh, can I ask a que, I don't know if you or if this gentleman over here, the first one?
Just ask.
Uh, just ask. I have, I was looking at this map very, very close and I've had the opportunity to be down in the LaToi area and I see a lot of crop dusting. And I hear comments that you'd be notified within three miles of it. And these aircraft are flying at such a low speed. And how do you adjust the placement of your towers if you're in the middle of a agricultural area? The placement of, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, how do you do your mix or is there an answer to that for? I mean, it, that to me would be really a challenge for someone besides a crop duster. I mean, I'm just asking. It's not a scientific.
Go ahead. Okay.
Primarily wind developments happen in agricultural areas. Um, and uh, and crop dusting is, I would say about ten to fifteen years ago, it was more of a concern. The, the short answer is you can crop dust around those turbines in some situations.
Even when operating?
Well, in some situations, we will curtail. That's the technical term. Yeah, turn them off. Where the crop dusting contractor asks us to. But the short answer is they can fly around them no problem. And it's uh, it's not an issue for the agricultural practices.
That was just a practical question.
I mean, I, I, I'm always in case. Men and ladies flying those planes around, making, making them in some pretty small areas. Monte, do you have any public safety?
No, I mean, other than we have a video from our project in Missouri where the crop dusters are, the turbines are turning and the crop dusters are flying and doing, making their routes.
What sort of ordinance do we have on crop testing, Scott? That was a rhetorical question. I think I knew that, but I just wanted to hear you say it.
Again, like, like noise, um, it is part of our research. We're aware of that issue.
Thank you.
It's, it's a, it is a, uh, a used service in our ag areas, so it's not an academic argument. It's very practical.
Yeah. How do you think there's anything on it?
Thank you very much. Unless there's more questions. At this point, I would like to invite anyone else who's in the audience that maybe didn't have a chance to fill out the yellow slip. But the duty of the chairman is to never um, curtail debate. We want people to come up. This is a workshop and the whole purpose of the workshop is to present your thoughts. And so we're here, ready to listen as always. And so now would be the time to come up and state your name and tell us what's on your mind regarding this item on the agenda. Is anyone online, by the way? No, raise hands. Okay. Well, we need to always check on that just to make sure. No one wants to um, come forward? All right, going once, going twice. Scott, I'll turn it back over to you for some closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you for your earlier presentation because I really, it really set the tone. I mean, it really, really excellent research uh, that has gone on. And um, it really helped me um, navigate through the, um, the discussion that followed. So thank you.
You're welcome. We, we, uh, we try to do our best. We have a very good team. The, as we said, the next stages of this will be to take this information, some of the questions you've got, we've got them on the record. We've got comments from our speakers on the record. We will produce a report or a digest of this meeting for the board and share that with them on August 11th as part of their quarterly update. Uh, we expect we'll get some additional feedback and direction from them. And then we will start uh, taking this into that next level of detail. We will look at, at the Cordelia Power information that was provided to us uh, and, and to use in, use that appropriately as we move forward. And depending on where the board goes, this will either come back as uh, potential ordinance or it will go directly into the EIS approach where it will be studied countywide. And then you'll see those results uh, after the draft EIS, we're still scheduled to have out around December 1st. Oh, we do have someone from the public that would like to speak.
That would be the time.
Hello, everyone. This is Paul Crop, uh, watching in with you all. During the whole conversation.
If you can hear us, we're, we're not getting you on the big audio.
Well, all I can do is.
There's a sidebar with the hands raised.
Maybe just stop sharing. I think we're done with the slides. Maybe that'll bring us back. Hold, hold, standby for a second, Paul.
Try again. Hello?
Paul, can you hear me?
No. Well.
Are we, is he being recorded? Paul, we, your audio is only coming through on our uh, console up here, but it is being recorded. If you'd like to continue your comments, uh, we will make sure that we get a transcript to the commissioners and I will uh, listen through Rona if you've got any questions.
Well, I do have a question.
Is it being typed on the screen as?
Which is this.
As he's speaking?
A, an ordinance draft has been referred to numerous times. My question is, is it available for the public to review as well?
Uh, Paul, yes, there was a draft ordinance produced early on in this process. We, uh, I, I believe it was posted to our web then. We will make sure it's posted now. It should be considered though, that that was a very early stage of the process before we went into this more detailed constraint approach. And so that ordinance at the moment is not something that we would consider a recommendation, but really another starting point.
So the answer is basically no, there's nothing new. Okay.
There, no, there, that's correct. There's no new ordinance language. There is only the ordinance language from um, earlier, uh, maybe even late 2024.
August, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Regret the technical lapse there. No one else is online.
Well, his comments be of record.
We're recording them. And I'll, the summary was, he asked specifically, he had heard in the conversation today that there was reference to a previously drafted Spokane County code or an ordinance. That's true. You saw that late last year. Now, that was an initial step that was being put out there as a, as a starting point for here's what we've learned in the very early stages from Whitman County and from some others. That was put essentially on the shelf or on hold to now go through this more detailed approach. So that ordinance is not something that we're bringing forward right now as a recommendation. It is still there and we will go back and adjust that if we want to use or how we use that approach. But it has not changed since it was first shown to you in, I believe, late 24.
Scott, before you leave that, oh, on August.
I'm sorry. She, she just let somebody pop. So we can only hear her there.
If, if Garrett, if you're there, we will be recording this. Please go ahead and, and state your comment uh, or question and we'll try to get it to it as best we can. Mr. Chairman, we're regret the technical challenges here. Clyde, what did you have?
On your meeting that you're going to be before the commissioners on August 11th, are you going to uh, share with them that you have a, a preliminary draft or your guidelines for them to understand where we're at?
We, no, we've, we've briefed them last year on that. And what we will be talking about on the 11th is really a summary of what was here today. The constraint map, rather than the ordinance in its, in its, you know, lawyerly detail, is what are these constraints? How do they affect the support or prohibition of renewable energy and wind power in the county? Again, we're, we're coming back up to that policy planning guidance level and leaving the code on the table for now. We've barely lost him, Mr.
I'm here. I just didn't know if I would, everyone was still kind of speaking. Um, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Garrett Lasavita. I am the land use lead for WDFW. Um, so if you had any questions for our agency and some of the work that we've put together with Josh and the county and our thoughts on any of this, I just wanted to let you know that we're available and I'd be happy to answer questions. I can't hear you. I can't hear your response, Scott. I can't hear anything that's being said right now.
If not.
How about now?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, great.
Any questions for DFW? Mr. Chairman, that's all we have from the audience.
Does that include all the testimony today on the workshop?
Yes.
Thank you, Garrett.
One opportunity for our commissioners to ask additional follow up questions. I know I say that at the risk with Clyde sitting here, but we're going to, we're we're going to forge ahead anyway. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The next order of business is the well. We want to do the the minutes of July seventeenth, two thousand twenty five. Now, to my recollection, there were two comments in here I did not make. And they dealt with the question about agritourism and the challenges of thirty percent or the clarification of thirty percent rule. Those, as memories serves me, were made by Logan Camparioli.
Okay.
Am I wrong about that?
I was not able to tell the difference between those things. So I thought I picked the ones that was pretty noticeable for me, but I I get you, Mr. Ranger mixed up, so I thought it might be incorrect, so I was hoping I would get it correct.
So you don't mix up Clyde's voice, but but but, okay, I I get that.
Mr. Chairman, we will make those corrections as noted.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. I'm flattered Logan is much younger than me, so thank you for the compare and contrast. Okay, thank you. Other than that, the minutes are in front of you. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt these minutes as corrected. Small, small correction. So move and second by Pete, moved by Mr. Hasi. All those a favor of approval, adoption of the minutes signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Those minutes are hereby adopted. Staff report.
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, we kind of, excuse me, alluded to this during the morning. But we will be going to the board on the eleventh with this information. Before that, on August sixth, we'll be hosting our first virtual open house, which will be, as we said, the first Wednesday now of every month through, potentially through June of twenty six, handling a topic, an exclusive topic every month focused around the GMA elements, economic development, housing, transportation, parks, open space, and so on. We're starting right out the blocks with climate and resiliency. And so you're welcome to dial in noon on Wednesday, the sixth, and every month thereafter. Your next, or one of the things we're doing at your next meeting is a joint open house with the Department of Ecology to consider amendments to the shoreline master program. You will, that information was posted thirty days in advance by Ecology's rules. And they will be with here with Corey Smith of our staff to walk through any thoughts and questions you may have. That will be a public hearing. You'll be able to take testimony from the public. That will be the sole, probably the sole item on that agenda, other than, you know, a staff report update. And then the following meeting on the twenty eighth, we will have an update of the EIS process, which will be more, every every time it gets a little more defined in terms of what the alternatives are for future study. By by the time we talk to our board on the eleventh, we're going to ask them to agree to a set of what we're calling bookends. What's one, one edge of study versus the other edge of study with the idea that ultimately your recommendation and their adoption can be anywhere in between on that, and that will be the that will be the final or preferred alternative that we hope to get from them later in the fall. So you'll get a briefing on that August twenty eighth. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
The next meetings are, I think we talked about August fourteenth, August the twenty eighth and September the eleventh. Any other business to come before us? Does anybody on the commission have any final thoughts? If not, yes, sir.
Are we going to have, for planning purposes, are we looking at meetings being about this length of time or longer, I mean, because we used to have longer ones, and I don't know. I'm just asking.
We've, we've tried to compartmentalize the agenda a little bit. I think as we start putting putting these pieces into, you know, kind of that synthesis, we will stretch, they will probably stretch out. Our goal is to keep them, you know, no longer than nine to noon if we can. If you wanted to look, perhaps look forward, by the time we get to mid third quarter of twenty six, and we're starting to look at and consider the plan as a whole, there may be sufficient public interest and testimony to keep us past that three hour break.
Just as a practical observation of this chair, I think you've done a great job in respecting our time and of the citizens and and keeping the scope into a manageable format that we could really get some meat out of it. Today was a good example of how we were able to take this project and give it a good discussion format. And it's now, it's almost quarter to eleven, and I don't find that unreasonable. I think it was a good meeting, and thank you so much for your your staff and the great job, and Rona, thank you so much. Thank you for the commissioners. Thank you for everyone who chose to attend today, either online or in the audience. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Pete. Second by Lonnie. All those a favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying no. We are hereby adjourned. It is quarter to, well, ten forty five. Thank you.